The time being 6:30, we will call the meeting of the 24th to order. At this time, I will ask Mr. Himmelberger to continue reorganization.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As is custom, this time of year, the first meeting called after the town elections. Boards reorganize. It is trusted in me to call for nominations for Chair, and then we will take the vote to see who the next Chair is, and then he or she will then proceed with the other officer As per MASCE, these do not need to be seconded. We merely need to have a nomination to place a name before the committee. So without further ado, I will accept nominations for Chair for the next year. Mrs. Coonan?
I nominate Mr. Spitz for Chair for this following school year.
Mr. Peterson?
I nominate Mrs. Dewitzak.
Mrs. Dewitzak?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Coonan for Chair.
Any further nominations? Place everyone here. Hearing none, nominations are closed. We have three names placed to nomination, Mr. Spitz, Mrs. Dewitzak, and Mrs. Coonan. All in favor of Mr. Spitz?
I think you go one by one. You call down the vote.
I'm sorry?
I vote, you were gonna call all in favor.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dewitzak.
This needs to be roll call.
Roll call.
Right. First name placed nomination is Mr. Spitz. Roll call vote. Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan is yes. Mr. Spitz? Mrs. Dewitzak?
No.
Mr. Peterson?
No.
All those four, three for Mr. Spitz, those in favor of Mrs. Dewitzak?
Can I interrupt? I believe you are to ask each individual who they wish to vote for. I think that's what, you would ask Mrs.? Right, you just ask her and go down, because you're gonna go right through?
We can certainly do it however the wish of the Chair.
Go right through, doesn't matter.
So you wanna roll call by name?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll roll call by name. We all know who the three names placed nomination are. Mrs. Ennis, your vote would be four.
Mr. Spitz.
Okay.
Again.
It's just easy to go through.
And Mrs. Coonan?
Mr. Spitz.
And Mr. Spitz?
Mr. Spitz.
Mrs. Dewitzak?
Mrs. Coonan.
And Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Dewitzak.
Mr. Spitz, congratulations, with three votes and the majority, you'll be Chair for next year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We now need to have nominations for Vice Chair. Would anyone like to propose names? Please do so.
That'll do. I'd like to nominate Mr. Peterson. Thank you.
I will nominate Mrs. Ennis. Is there any more nominations? Being that there are none, I will close the floor for that, and could we take a roll call vote, please? First name that we have is Mr. Peterson.
No.
Mrs. Coonan?
No.
I also vote no. Mrs. Dewitzak?
Well, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Next name we have up is Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mrs. Dewitzak?
Well, I can't vote again, that's why you're doing it, so, no.
Okay, and?
It's an honest way. Can't vote for two people.
No, I am, but I thought you wanted it each individually done.
What you do is you go yes, who yes, you yes, yes.
Okay, so we've gotten our yeses. Being that the majority of three, Mrs. Ennis will be the Vice Chair for the coming year. Next, we'd like to vote for Secretary. Mrs. Ennis?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Coonan.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, being that there are none, I'll close that portion of it. Can we put that to a roll call vote, please, by name?
Mrs. Coonan?
Mrs. Coonan?
Mrs. Coonan?
Mrs. Coonan?
No.
Okay. So we're gonna go four. Okay, so that would be the current board for the coming year. You may be excused.
I have to go, please excuse me, congratulations.
I know, you have a doctor's appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have on the agenda, the Oxford Music Department. Please step forward with your group. We'd love to talk to you. Yeah, we have trophies, they should all see those, so please bring them forward.
Wow.
One, two, three.
I hope they're going to break into some kind of tune.
I like that. Mr. Baggett, why don't you tell the audience, first of all, what you did down there with your group, what you won. We do have a press release in front of us, but I'd like you to kinda summarize it for the people that are watching tonight, if you could.
Okay, my job here this evening is to present the people that will do that.
Okay.
Very much more entertaining way than I possibly could. And I would like to thank the school committee for putting us on the agenda at a rather late date, but this is a very recent happening. I wanted to, for my part, to compliment the members of the band and the chorus and the jazz band, whose behavior was just superb. And that is what, kinda what this big guy is all about. The most important thing that we did down there was to get, have the kids have the opportunity to see other groups and to participate out of state, give ourselves a little traveling experience. And I must also say that it is one of the main, or one of the large, or most important, what am I trying to say when you try to get people in your group?
Recruit?
Recruiters. It's one of our shrewd recruiting techniques. We try to go on a trip, and it has to be a meaningful trip every year. And I think with this table full of trophies, we have another larger table in the bandroom that we take the trophies out every year and dust them off about this time. It's getting quite a load in there. And before I get myself into more trouble, I'm still recovering from the trip, I'm drowsy. I'd like to introduce you to the band captain, who will take over this seat, and present the other presenters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baggett. Just please identify yourself, let us know what year you are in the school, and...
All right, my name is Jane Parker. I've been the band captain for all year this year, and I helped Mr. Baggett and the other officers organize fundraisers and events that we had throughout the year, so we could go on the trip and win all the trophies. We had a really good time this year for the band trip, like, it was one of the most memorable. I don't know if that was just because I'm a senior or not, but I'll remember it for a while. Catherine is our Sergeant Major, and she's gonna be talking about the overview of what we did throughout the whole trip.
Hello, my name is Catherine Lavoy. I'm a senior at Oxford High School, I'm graduating in a couple days. I am the, I'm the current Sergeant Major of the band. Went down to, over to Allentown, Pennsylvania for our festival this year. Well, our main concern is on the Saturday, although we went down on Friday, on Saturday we had our, the actual festival, the Music in the Parks Festival, which we competed, our band, chorus, and jazz band competed against all many schools from six different states to get adjudicated on our talent. On Friday, we went down, we, it was a very long bus drive. We took a couple stops, ate some food, and then we went to the hotel and then had a nice dinner at a buffet. That wrapped up the first night. The second day was our festival, the performance. We got up at seven in the morning, ate breakfast, got our band together and our attire, and headed to the Shoemaker Elementary School to sing our, to have our choir sing their four selections. Then we traveled directly over to the Johnny, what? Ire? Middle school? Middle school. And that is where both the concert band and the jazz band played. We had three selections for concert and two selections for jazz. We waited, not waited, we had a lot of fun in the park, Dorney Park in Pennsylvania. While we have waited to get our award presentation at the park, and we got our awards, which will be explained by Jane.
All right, so like she said, the first piece, stuff that we were adjudicated on was the mixed choir, and we had a lot of girls, and we had seven boys in the chorus this year, so it was really exciting. And the first piece we sang was called "Sleep" by Eric Whitaker. It is a really difficult piece, and we worked on it really hard all year. And we ended up getting superior first place, and that is the highest that you can get for that first place, and we did really well. Then we went to the next school, and concert band played first, and we did a warm-up with Ness and Dorma. Oh wait, I'm sorry. We sang another chorus song, actually. We sang more than one song. We did Celtic Fantasy, and it had three parts to it, and we had members from band and people from the chorus also play some instrumental parts to go along with the chorus, and then with concert band. And we warmed up with Ness and Dorma, and the first piece we were adjudicated on was March in Pursuit of Bacchus. March in, March in Possession of Bacchus.
You're doing great, you're doing great, just keep going.
I'm combining the pieces, because the next one was called Pursuit. And then concert band also got superior first place, the highest part. And then jazz band played, and they played their two songs, which were Frankie and Johnny and Bone Collection, and they placed with excellent first place. And the biggest award here is called the Esprit de Corps Award.
Which you have to turn over some.
Yes. And Derek will be speaking about that.
This young lady would not let go of the Esprit de Corps.
No, I, like, after we got it, I did not let it out of my sight.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Derek Weagle, I'm the drum major of the band and the pseudo conductor. Adding on to what Jane said before, I want to talk about one more award before we talk about this one. One of our students in the chorus, Jason Green, he's a tenor, he received an Outstanding Vocalist Award for overall, in the entire competition, he was one of the best vocalists.
Wow.
I think he was the only.
There was a middle school given.
There was a middle school one? He was the only high school one. And he was ecstatic about that, we were all ecstatic about that. He did an absolutely amazing job getting into his character of a very angry Irishman, talking about how he couldn't wear green anymore. Moving on to the Esprit de Corps Award, I've been assigned to talk about it since I'm a drum major. The Esprit de Corps Award is all about spirit, and that's my place in the band, is the morale officer and spirit, along with Amber. She's also the morale officer, and she does a very good job at it as well. The Esprit de Corps Award is given for the most cooperative, spirited, and overall, best interacting school with all the other schools there. For the award ceremony, we made sure we clapped for every other school, we showed spirit even on the bus ride in the park, when we were talking to people backstage getting ready for our performances. And it's just all about being polite, and this is our third Esprit de Corps Award in the past seven years.
Wow, that's great.
That we've been going on band trips. And it's really about it with the Esprit de Corps Award. It's just a great, great pleasure to have it, and I think it just sums up what we are at Oxford High School as a band. We're a very, very tight-knit bunch, and we're like a family, and we all love each other, so, and we're not afraid to extend that to all the other bands that were down there as well. So, thank you.
Very good. Nice you all love each other.
Hi, I'm Matt Thompson, I'm the Lieutenant Captain of the band this year. And one of the things that really helped us along with the festival was our clinic the day before. We had a few people from colleges in the area come and listen to our chorus and bands to kind of adjudicate us, adjudicate us to replicate what the festival would be like, and they also helped us along with things we might need work on, and emphasized the things that we were doing well on. So first, that morning, the day before the band trip, the chorus was adjudicated by Dr. Wayne Abercrombie, who is the chorus conductor emeritus at UMass Amherst. And he helped the chorus along for about an hour and a half with things that they had trouble with, he emphasized the things that they did well. And then after, the concert band played for Dr. Douglas Weeks, who's the Director of Instrumental Music at WPI. And he did the same as Abercrombie did for the chorus, he did that for the concert band. And the jazz band was then adjudicated by Rich Falco, who's the head of the jazz program at WPI. And these three men really helped us out, they helped us with what we needed help on, they kind of emphasized the things that Mr. Baggett said, that way we could get it from a different view. And I think it really helped our scores in the festival and helped us get to where we were. And then after they helped us, we had lunch together with the whole music department as kind of bonding and to get ready for the next day. And then we had our luggage check right after that. So, I think the clinic really helped out. I'll turn it over to Amber, who will talk about the more fun things we did on the festival.
Hello, my name's Amber Meadows, I'm the Sergeant at Arms. Basically, I'm the mascot. Basically. I, it's natural that I would talk about the fun times we had, I keep everybody's spirits up, and try to at least. So after competition and everything, we went to Dorney Park, and we had a blast. It was amazing, it was a very good bonding experience. We were able to really bond as a band and as a chorus, and it was a really good feeling. We bonded with Mr. Baggett as well. We got pictures of him on a roller coaster, I wish I had a copy. He looks like he's driving the roller coaster, he's like this. It was priceless, it was good. We even bonded with our bus driver, Bill, he was a really nice guy, we tried to incorporate everybody, he was there. We got to talk to other people who were also competing. It was a great time, we, the bus ride was really, really long, so we had great bonding time on the bus. People were like sleeping and eating, and it was, it was good, it was a great overall experience. It was great, I loved it. I love band trip, it's just fun. You gotta learn a lot about the people that you're around too, you do, it's a great, great time. So, band trip is good.
Excellent. You just pumped me up, aren't you excited? I'm ready to go on band trip.
So now we have our representative for future band generations. And I keep going, I'm gonna sit down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Telly, and I'm a sophomore at Oxford High School. Now, I'm obviously an underclassman, so, now, yeah. So my class and the classes before me, we, the band depends on us now that the seniors are gone, and the juniors this year will be seniors next year, and will be leaving. So I would just like to thank the seniors and the juniors this year for everything that they have taught us, everything that they've helped us on, like, in any way, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Baggett, because he has taught so much to us, and this band would not be what it is without him, so.
We went home on Sunday, I forgot to touch it. We did go home.
If I could just wrap it up a little bit, this was, as you probably are aware, was totally unscripted, from the heart, to these kids. When they say they bonded, the bonding started the day before, the bonding started the day they walk in as freshmen. Every year in football season, we try to have one day where we paper the windows to the bandroom so that the administration can't see what's going on, and we have a potluck lunch. And everybody brings in food, and we take our hour and a half band plus lunch, and we get to know each other early in the year. Well, I thought it would be a really great idea to do that before we went on our trip, so we did that the day that we had the adjudicators come in, and it really works. You know, food does wonders for the soul. And not only that, but they cleaned up after themselves.
Wow.
Thank you. I want to thank the school committee for giving us the opportunity to once again go out of town and represent this town in a way that's appropriate, and we hope that we brought a good deal of pride and honor to the town. So thank you again, very much.
We want to thank you for what you've been able to accomplish with the band, and obviously they're very satisfied with their tutelage that you give them. And we're also, every year you come back and you share these great stories of what you've been able to accomplish, and that's a tribute to you. So thank you again, very much, and thank you all for representing the town so wonderfully. Mrs. Ennis?
Can I just ask you, any of you seniors going to college for music of any kind?
We have some that are.
You do? Yeah, that's great. It sounds like you had a wonderful time, it'll be one of those memories you never forget. Very good.
For the right reasons, too.
Definitely, that's right. This is a great, great school memory.
Mr. Peterson?
Well, I had it on my notes for school committee, but I'm gonna go out of order, Mr. Spitz, if I may, while they're here.
Yep.
I'd just like to thank them, my wife and I went to the concert the other night, and it's always amazing where you start in the fall and where you wind up in the spring. And as you said, I've seen bonding over the years here, it's fantastic where the music program is. We really need to try to help you with more, when we can, I don't know, but keep up the good work. And I just wanted to thank all of the band and choir, not just the six of you that are here, but I know you represent them and are trying to represent the whole organization. Again, Mr. Baggett, and the band and choir, thank you for your tremendous work for the season.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thanks again, we really appreciate it.
Thank you again. Dismissed.
Next.
Good job.
Yeah, let's give them a little round. Next, we'd like to talk to our Student Council Representative. Go right ahead, it's all you.
Here I go, right? Okay. First up, we have, the sports are coming to a close within the next week, both the varsity and junior varsity softball and baseball teams have two games left within this week. The boys have to win these next two games in order to make the district tournament held later postseason for track. The regular season is over, but it is now postseason. For the boys, their overall record was 11-1, and for the girls, it was 7-5. And they are participating in a state qualifying meet this Saturday at Fitchburg State College, and the top four in each event will go on to the state meet, which will be held at Westfield State. From the Student Council, tomorrow, May 25th, the Student Council is holding elections for student council positions and class officers, which include President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. This will be held during the last period of school tomorrow, and each grade breaks up into different sections of the school, the cafeteria, the gym, the auditorium, and that's where they pick who's gonna represent them for the year to come. Also from the Student Council, on next Tuesday, June 1st, we will be hosting the annual talent show here at the Oxford High School Auditorium. At 5:30, we will have a middle school talent show for them, which will also serve as a practice for them, because their talent show is the next night. And the high school will begin at 7:00 PM. The cost is $5 to perform, as well as $5 admission, and there will be a cash prize awarded to the winners. All the more to come and show us your talents. Myself and another junior, Brittany Galot, a few weeks back, I'm not sure if I talked about this, we attended a regional student advisory council meeting. We were elected by the Student Council, that's one of the requirements, you have to be on Student Council, to represent our school as a region on a student advisory council, and we went. And the first meeting we went to was more of a break the ice, get to know everyone, get to know what your role is, and we'll talk about issues that we have in our school with fellow school students, along with other issues that we think will arise, how we can solve them. And while we were there, me and Brittany and I, and two other people, were elected for state student advisory council. And next week, and the week after, two days, we have to travel to a city, or, I mean, a town near Boston, I don't know the name right now, it's escaping me, but, and for the year to come, we attend a regional meeting and a state meeting every month from here on out, starting in October. So it's really good that we're getting ourselves out there regionally and statewide, so I promise we'll represent Oxford well. Back, okay. And on June 7th, we are hosting the Student Council Award Breakfast, where the teachers cook the Student Council members a nice breakfast, and awards are given out, including trophies, pins, certificates, all for different stuff, attendance, most enthusiastic, all different kinds of stuff, so that'll be a good time. And from the 84, since I came right from my doctor's appointment, I do not have the invitations, but I will get them to you. The 84 is hosting their end-of-the-year award banquet at Oxford's Casual Dining. I will get the invitation to the office, the central office, and you can, you'll get them, they have the date and the time and everything, but they'd really enjoy it if you were there. We all invite you to come and spend the evening with us, celebrating our success over the past year and our various awards, and we hope you're there. Several students from different English classes will be traveling on Wednesday to see Emily Dickinson's house in Amherst, Massachusetts. Senior events, this is a big one. There's a lot of stuff going on, so you might want to get out your calendars. Today, they had their class trip to High Meadows. On Wednesday, there is class night where awards are given, and this begins at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, May 27th, that is the senior banquet, which is going to be held at the Spencer Country Inn this year. And on Friday, May 28th, is the graduation ceremony, which I'm hearing will be held outside, according to the weather. And from ROTC, their end-of-the-year awards banquet will be held on June 15th at the Auburn Elks, starting at 5:30 PM, and they just learned this information Friday, so hot off the press news right now. And touching on, like, past news, prom was held on Saturday, May 22nd, at Holy Cross, the Hogan Center, juniors and seniors, and it was a blast. It was so fun, the food was absolutely delicious, decorated nicely. I'd like to thank the prom committee if they're watching, they did such a great job, Mrs. Corey and Ms. Anderson, both junior, senior and junior advisors, great time had by all. And that's all I have for tonight.
Well, that's great, thank you so much. Any comments from the committee? We're good? All right, next we have the summer reading programs. And would you like to take that, Mr. Himmelberger?
Certainly, Mr. Spitz. In your packets, you did receive the summer reading from the elementary for each grade level, and also from the middle school and the high school, for the committee's comments and approval.
Do I have any comments? Mrs. Ennis?
I think that after going through the material over the weekend, I have to say these are probably some of... I think that after going through the material over the weekend, I have to say these are probably some of the better uh, reading, summer reading programs. So, so many of the books, especially for the 1, 2, 3 and 4 grades are so familiar to me and I think that this is probably, has to be maybe, maybe one of the best programs put together. The middle school also, I think it's outstanding, their program that they put together. And great books on the high school end too, really good reading, so I hope that it's, you know, good, good summer of reading for all the kids.
That's great. Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Himmelberger?
Just to, to add to Mrs. Ennis's comments, I think that the administrative team really took it to heart
Oh, they did.
a year ago, the committee's concern and obviously the interest that the committee has in this. And I'm, I'm very appreciative that all of the administrative team really supported each other in coming up with, I think, a very comprehensive list for everybody.
Very good. Mrs. Coonan, you have something?
Just the elementary schools really showing the alignment, I, I think is great. The middle school, we did have some concerns and I, I think this is just spot on. And I, and I, I don't believe that there would be any more concerns at this point, so congratulations to the administrative team, well done.
Very good job. This is excellent. They really did. Any other questions, comments? Everybody good? For routine matters, we have the approval of minutes for May 5th. I'd like to do that one first if we could. Do I have a motion to approve?
Questions?
Okay, we have, question, Mrs. Ennis?
One second. Oh, I got the wrong one. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Peterson?
You're talking the single sheet, May 5th?
The single sheet, May 5th, I think is what we've got here.
Well, I got clarification. Mrs. Ennis was eliminated and Mrs. Coonan was listed as secretary. And then in the adjournment motion by me and submitted by Mrs. Ennis, was she at the meeting or not?
I was at this meeting, town meeting?
Yeah, I was the only one that wasn't at that.
I understand that, but you're not in the upper part, so I would request that Mrs. Ennis be included. Secretary be stricken.
Very good. We can definitely make those changes. All right, other than that, are we, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we call, vote for that? Mrs. Ennis, Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also will abstain because I was not present. So they are approved and thank you. May 10th. Any questions, comments, changes? Mrs. Ennis?
I have a correction under superintendent's evaluation. My comments, it should be things. And I think, I think that was the only thing.
Mrs. Coonan?
Just one small correction. Um, here we, here we go again. It was Mr. Peterson, not Mrs. Your school committee members.
Okay. Our school committee members, it said Mrs. Peterson.
No, here, on page, um, next to the last page.
Next to the last page.
For your comments for the evening.
Okay, being that there are no other changes or corrections, could we have a motion to approve?
All moved. Second.
Very good. Can we call, vote on that, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also have to abstain from this one, I was not present. But that passes and I thank you very much for that. Do we want to do the executive session that you also have included? No, right now, right? We'll hold that? Okay.
Sorry.
No, go right ahead.
For, for the record, I mean, this is still ongoing talk.
Right, and that's why I thought we might hold that. Okay, thank you very much for that. Under new business, school physician, Mr. Himmelberger, do you want to deal with that one?
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. According to state law, we have to have a physician in place and if you recall from a year or so ago, as Dr. Shaw retired, we had a difficult time finding a physician, so Mr. Boss did find South County Pediatrics, agreed to take it on. The contract just came in at 4:30 this afternoon, but it is very similar to a year ago and the most important thing is that everybody seems to be happy with the arrangement and the service as well as the price staying the same. So I would just ask for the committee's questions and comments and hopefully approval.
Mrs. Coonan?
Are there any changes to the contract?
I don't believe so. I think it is, I hate to use this word, verbatim, from a year ago.
Thank you.
Being that there are no other questions or comments, could we entertain a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, could we put that to vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
No.
I'll vote yes on this. Okay. And you also, if you could help us with the food service positions portion of the meeting?
Certainly, Mr. Spitz. The food service should be positioned singular. The current structure has been in place for many years with Mrs. Scolaro as the director and then with a food service manager, which most districts our size do not have, but it was something that seemed to work for the structure for many years. With Mrs. Scolaro's retirement, this month, next month, excuse me, we did advertise for, if you recall, a one-year interim position due to the fact that we were unable to go out with an RFP on a timely manner before the end of the school year. So we did advertise for a one-year interim and Pat Hokinson was named as the interim director. And by all accounts, has done an outstanding job for us. And so what we would ask, and this is again with both, both Mrs. Scolaro and Mr. Matthews' input, is that rather than have a manager-level person with that slightly larger salary, it was decided that what we really need is a secretary in the person of somebody about 20 hours a week that would help count the money, be the second person in the office, handle the, the phone calls and make sure that all of the accounts were updated online. So instead of a director and manager, we felt that with, with the director and a secretary, that we would be perhaps even more efficient because certainly Mrs. Scolaro said that she would be available to, to help out on any issues that did come up, primarily with accounting and, and the books because she is so good at that. But where it was a one-year appointment, I would, I would offer that we, based upon the recommendations of Mrs. Scolaro, Mr. Matthew, that we would also look for a one-year interim appointment for a secretarial position of 20 hours or so per week.
And you have the money for that and already built into the budget that you can account for?
Yes, sir. It would not be from operating, it would be paid for from the revolving food service account.
Okay.
And it would actually be, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Matthew, slightly less, but no more than the combination that we have been paying for the two positions all along.
Okay. Mrs. Ennis, you have a question?
I, I, looking for, I think, clarification. You said that you didn't have time to do an RFP? For this, is it for the position or for?
If you, if you recall from the middle of the year,
I might have missed some of this.
Mr. Peterson had asked the committee, from the committee at the request of Mr. Matthew and myself, to look at outsourcing
The food service.
the food service and custodial functions. And it took quite a while and an awful lot of time and Mr. Matthew did a very thorough professional job assembling the RFP on the custodial, but by that time, we were too deep into the spring to really do an effective cycle of the RFP for the food service. The committee then, when we brought it back to the committee, it was decided to just do a one-year interim appointment to allow us to continue next year with a director, knowing that we would still have the opportunity if the committee so requested, that we could go out in a timely manner for an RFP in the future.
If I might?
Continue.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to our superintendent, the interim director position, you took outside applicants?
Absolutely.
How many did you have?
We had, I believe, 14.
You had 14, oh.
Total applicants that did apply.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So, Mr. Peterson?
The, so you're going to go with the director and the secretary will come out of revolving account derived from food services money?
Correct, from food service receipts.
And where, who's determining the, the contract and the salary comes under your perusal, I believe, right? For the director?
That is correct. We would, we would talk with Mr. Matthew, myself and Ms. Hokinson to see what would be the appropriate secretarial type salary and for that position.
I, I don't think my salary, may I?
Definitely.
I don't believe the secretary is so much my concern as I'm the one that requested the RFPs. And I'm not certain it was totally put on hold, but I understand your position and where you're at at this time. I would like a report from you and Mr. Matthew when you determine the director's salary and benefits of the person being promoted, please, to us.
Okay.
Certainly, and that is ongoing work in progress as we speak.
I understand it's not resolved yet, but
Absolutely.
And I, again, will reiterate, I understand where we're at at this point in time, but I still, when we have the, when we have the opportunity to prepare the RFP to re-study the food services program again. I, I never withdrew that from the table, so I think we tabled it until they can take it up again at a later date
Okay.
and do what we have to do.
So we can have that report from Mr. Peterson when this is finalized and?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and just as a point of clarification, I believe the, the, um, the calendar was just not in our favor, which is why we did not want to do this and put us with any sort of exposure as we went beyond Mrs. Scolaro's time limit. And seemed to be a one-year interim was, was the prudent thing to do and the committee certainly appreciated that.
So tonight, you're, you're looking for what?
Tonight, we would just look for approval. Approval from the committee to create essentially a new position, which is called Something Different and has a different job function. Hence, coming to the committee for that approval. It does not replace, even though it, it appears on the surface that it is a one-for-one swap. We're actually looking to staff the food service department with not a manager who works a 30, a 35-hour week, but a secretary who would fulfill a lot of those functions at a 20-hour position.
Mr. Peterson?
I'll move that with one more comment.
Sure.
That, that is absolutely from the revolving account, which I trust you, but that it puts no weight or bearing on the food prices. That we have the money from that account without increasing food prices or anything else to do such. At, I mean, obviously if we have to go up in prices, that's one thing, but it can't be because of adding an extra position.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Mr. Himmelberger?
The understanding that we have is, is exactly that, Mr. Peterson, that we would not be looking to increase prices at this time and that we would, if anything, take a little pressure off of the revolving account by perhaps a few dollars. The, the, the nexus for changing the title from manager to the secretarial position is that upon closer inspection, it seems that we can be more efficient in the running of the food service program. And because it's a different title, thought it was appropriate to bring it before the committee.
One sec, just, Mrs. Ennis? Okay, Mr. Peterson?
My motion is clarification for one reason, this position first, then I will move to change the title of the other one.
So you're, you're moving right now to create?
To create the position
Okay.
financed through the revolving account.
Okay, so we have that on the table first, why don't we take care of that?
That's all I want to clarify, thank you.
We'll take care of that first. Do I have a second on that, on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Could we put that to a vote? We'll clarify that. Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? I will vote yes for that too, so that, we've created the position.
Thank you.
Part two of that, Mr. Peterson?
I would move to use Mr. or Superintendent Himmelberger's recommendation to move it from manager, that position, title from manager to director.
Okay.
We can't put any names to it, that's his call, so. Or is it the other way around? I'm sorry.
Can you clarify that for us?
Um, after Mr. Peterson clarifies for, for me, we have right now
That's what I thought.
a food service director, which, which is Mrs. Scolaro
Sorry, I wrote it down.
and a manager, which is Mrs. Hokinson, Ms. Hokinson.
Right.
And so now, Ms. Hokinson will become the interim director. So we really have a vacant
We will not have a manager.
position that would be not filled.
Right.
My, my motion is to accept his recommendation of a director at this point in time.
Okay. So was that something that had to be motioned? That's a choice that you can make, correct, or?
Right, but it certainly, I want to
Because it's one title and we have to eliminate one position or other down the road if we don't need the manager, right?
But I think he is eliminating manager and instead creating the position of a secretary.
For the year. For the one year.
One year.
Correct. I was just hoping that to get the committee's approval for the, for the one-year interim secretarial position.
Mr. Peterson, is that?
That's fine, you got both. I have, I approve both. I don't care how you want to do it.
Okay, I, well, I just want to make sure you're happy with it, that, you know, what you are looking for, we've done.
He, he's, he's moving it to director, but I think there's clarification later and I'll let it go.
Okay, so you, you're okay right now?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Mrs. Ennis, did you have anything else?
Not on, not on this, on this subject, I just have one other thing.
Yes.
What was I gonna say now?
I'm sorry, I kind of threw it back to you.
No, it's okay, it's all right. Oh, when is a good time to do the RFP? What would be a good time of the year to do that?
I will defer to Mr. Matthew on that.
I think if the committee wanted to explore something, we could certainly look at it in the fall. It was just the timing this particular year with all of the related circumstances.
I'd like to move that we go forward with that RFP for our food service and that, so we don't have any delay. And even if it will give you, you know, maybe a leg up and you can start in August if necessary. Because I think that's something we, we wanted to look at for, for quite a while and I, I think it's something, now that we have opportunity, let's take advantage of it. So I, my motion is to, to have Mr. Matthew and Mr. Himmelberger put together an RFP for the food service. What would we call it? Food service services that, that take care of the Oxford district?
Mr. Peterson?
I, I don't believe you need the motion, Mrs. Ennis, because mine still stands. We just deferred it till they can come up with the time. If you want to set a, a new timeline or date, that's one thing, but the motion is still existing and that they have to continue on with it once we move this and move forward.
Can you?
I'll amend mine to the timeframe that they want, that's fine.
That's, I just didn't want to miss it. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just didn't want to miss it again.
I just don't want this to interfere with the opening of school, so if you can do something in August or get September, get it out of our way and then go to it or something, all right?
Just so we don't miss it, yeah.
Okay? However, whenever you can start again to do it.
Would you like to put a date with that, Mr. Peterson, or?
Well, again, I agree with Mrs. Ennis, sometime, sometime in August, if they have the time and the capability, let them report back to us and where, where they stand and how they're, how they're moving with it, all right?
If I may?
You certainly may.
Could I respectfully request that we do it in October, after the start of school, still hits the fall timeline.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
FY12 by the planning season.
Move it to October. That's what I was concerned about, the September opening and interfering and getting school moving properly.
Whatever works for you guys, as long as we do it, I think is the key. And could we put those in the minutes, that the, the motion is for October? Okay, so do we have a second on Mr. Peterson's motion? Which we would need to do, on his amended motion.
Yeah, it's an amended action.
Right. Okay. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
So if we could take care of that in October?
Just, just
Yep, Mr. Peterson, go right ahead.
Make it understood that not necessarily that's the way we're going, but it, it pays to study these every few years to make sure that we are getting what we need for our money if it's in-house or outhouse.
Gotcha. Very good. Everybody good with that? We're okay?
Very good.
Excellent. Um, we have no subcommittees tonight. We've already talked to, yes, go right ahead.
If I could?
Oh, go, go right ahead.
While we're on subcommittees for a moment?
Certainly.
We do have an awful lot of them, but when we meet, are they meeting? We have a safety subcommittee, you and I have
We have not started that yet, which we really said we were gonna get going
I was wondering
wholeheartedly on that.
if maybe we could, I guess with our superintendent, if we could start to look at reconvening these meetings and bring out some parents, get some, we were looking for parents were looking for parental involvement. I think this is a way to bring them in, community people to come in. Um, I know summer is tough, I understand that, and I'm sure we're not gonna start a bunch of subcommittee meetings now because that's near impossible, but to prepare for the fall, you know, just to get a step up.
Get the schedule put together and definitely.
Step up. I would like to really see those resume.
Well, especially that one, I think, was a very important one that we really needed
The building one was excellent, yeah. It really was. We had a great group, yeah.
Okay, we certainly can, I'll make sure we get that together.
Thanks.
Okay, everybody good on subcommittees?
Yes, sir.
Um, could we hear from the superintendent of schools, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of quick notes. Um, last Monday, we had, um, the smell of propane in the air at the Barton School and we, um, had been through this drill once before on February 2nd and so all staff and students performed once again in an outstanding fashion and spent the day at the middle school as the guests of the middle school. Um, more importantly, uh, we had the gas inspector, Ostermans, our facilities, department scour and scrub and test the system inside the building and the professionals came away with a clean building. Obviously, the fire department then and Chief Bemis cleared us to go back to school the next day. Um, what is disappointing is that we really couldn't get between all of that, um, all of the assembled professionals to pinpoint what might have caused it. And so, what we are doing now through the facilities and in conjunction with the gas inspector and Ostermans is testing each one of the tanks to see if there might be a leak in one of the five underground tanks. Um, because from all of the tests that were run all day, we could go month, uh, we could go today, nothing was conclusive and nothing was found and certainly, um, we are awaiting their, their testing to find out exactly if in fact there is a leak or what it possibly could have been. But certainly, the building itself, from the outside and the roof and from all of the piping which caused the, the first incident on February 2nd, has been pressure-checked and given a clean bill of health by all of the professionals and that's what's most important, obviously, to us. Um, so, Ostermans does have some work along with the gas inspector and facilities to really do a thorough testing of the five tanks, um, to see if in fact there might be, um, something there.
Mr. Peterson?
If I may, before he continues on along those lines, when and how often will he be testing those tanks or checking those lines? And the recovery of 5,000 gallons of propane that we lost, are we insured? Are they insured or who is, or are we just out the?
I'm...
The money?
I'm still...
Those were only filled about, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Only approximately less than two weeks prior to this leak. Those were filled early April. We had a full 5,000 gallons of, of fuel in there, my understanding.
And that's what we first have to get to the bottom of, if in fact, were they topped off in April?
That's my question, too.
And we have Ostermans working on that, um, to see if in fact, was there a, a rather large amount of propane that evaporated or were the tanks not topped off in April? And, um, we're, I don't want to speak for Mr. Matthew, but we are still comparing usage, degree days, and will take, um, the appropriate action, um, as we move forward with our supplier.
Continue, Mr. Peterson.
My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, we do know that there was a thousand put in there the day of the leak, right? Or they refilled the day or day after the leak one tank only?
Correct. I'm not sure the exact amount, but yes, that was so, so that we could...
The receipt would bear 1,000, but again, I'd like to know if those tanks are holding that thousand or if there's only 500 going in there and we're getting billed on their meter for a thousand or whatever.
And that's what we are test, that's what we are testing to get to the bottom of.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, so, we'll have that information, you think, soon?
Uh, would hope to have it for June 7th.
Great, excellent.
Thank you.
If I could add?
Oh, definitely.
The tanks were, uh, tested that day, last Monday, um, and the tanks were holding the, uh...
Right.
Amount of pressure that was put in, so that individual tank certainly was holding its however many gallons.
But, but those are in a series, are they not?
Yes, they are.
That feed off each other. So, when will that be tested? I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, you continue.
When will that be tested again to make sure that that is not leaking through one of the other tanks and the thousand is still holding? Uh, is it gonna be a week, two weeks, a month?
Ostermans is gonna be coming back on a regular basis to, to check the pressure, compare the usage and we'll...
What's a regular basis? They're gonna wait till fall when we start heating again?
No, weekly.
Weekly, all right, thank you.
Okay.
You're good? That's fine, thank you.
Mr., continue, please.
And I just had a couple of other things on a, on a more uplifting note.
Okay.
Um, and that was that I was, uh, fortunate enough to attend the athletic award banquet at the high school last, uh, Monday and got to present the second annual Ernie Boss Award and, um, it was a great evening, um, a little past my bedtime when it was done, but it was still a terrific event. And I also was invited to, uh, speak at the, um, middle school NJHS induction, uh, on Wednesday evening and it was amazing the support that that program has in the middle school. The auditorium was just about full.
Cool.
And, um, it was really, truly a, a, um, a terrific evening for everybody that attended. I think the students really, really, um, were most impressive and as I said that night, it's the best part of being a superintendent, you can recognize student achievement and it was, um, just a terrific evening. So, um, it's, it's an exciting, busy, but exciting time of year.
Very good.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Um, who, I was unable to make the awards banquet, so who made the, uh...
You know, I knew that you were gonna ask me and the gentleman's name escapes me and I will see if I can get it.
Okay.
It totally escapes me and I, as I said it, I said, well...
Okay, just curious.
But it was a football player, well-deserved.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
I just have one more quick thing.
Yep, certainly.
Again, um, obviously, last week, there was, there was, um, I guess rumors is the right way to say it, of, uh, the impending demise of all things extracurricular at the high school. Um, not quite sure where it, where it started from, but it certainly moves through, uh, at internet speed, just not quite as accurate. And so, I wanted to just go on the record as stating that Niask certainly pointed to our outstanding, uh, athletic, NJROTC art, music programs that we offer and, um, certainly, um, Mrs. Ennis and I agree that you have to educate the whole child and for some of our students, whatever it is that, that keeps them motivated and, and going through is, is what we need to offer. And so, I wanted to just make, uh, on the record that if, if any changes do happen, number one, they would have to be going through the school committee and, and number two, um, it would be without, you know, not without duly being considered. So, I would hope that folks look forward to having their students engage in all of our academic as well as, as co-curricular and extracurricular activities going forward. It's, it's what makes us as good as we are. So, thank you.
Good. Mr. Matthew?
Um, just a quick update on the FY-11 budget. Um, while it was approved at town meeting, uh, the senate budget came out, the senate, uh, Ways and Means budget came out last week and they have a different amount for our Chapter 70 and our SFSF grant.
You're gonna tell us it's higher, right?
No, it's actually the same, which is Ali's goodness.
Oh, okay, all right.
You know, it's not, we're not going backwards, but the amounts have, have, are different than the House and different than what was voted at town meeting. So, obviously, we have to wait until the conclusion of the process, but at the fall town meeting, we may have to vote, uh, an additional appropriation that will be coming from Chapter 70, depending on how all of this flushes out.
Okay.
Um, so just...
Just keep us updated with that, if you could.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
And in terms of financial reports, I'll have, um, end-of-year projections at the next meeting.
Great, excellent. Mr. Peterson?
Um, yeah, it's been, all of May is always an active month. It's tough to handle, but uh, we, we get through it. I'd like to commend, I also attended the NJHS at the Oxford Middle School. It was extremely, extremely professional. I have to commend to Mr. Himmelberger's speech, the administration, the students, the parents and everyone. As he said, the auditorium was jam-packed. Um, I almost had to walk from home from Depot Road. It was, there were empty cars out here. It was unbelievable. But it was an extremely professional, well-handled night.
Good.
I have to commend the whole system, parents and all, on, on their, uh, night. The awards banquet I also attended and, uh, I had it written down, Mr. Himmelberger, but you know what? It's in the front seat of my car. I can't remember his name, but it was the football player that got the, or Mr. Boss's award. Mr. Boss was there. Um, I tried to serve him coffee, but he wouldn't accept it, so we put a handicap placard and I don't know if Mr. Himmelberger saw it, so he would be able to, uh, maybe take a nap or something, but in front of his chair was the first time I've ever seen a handicap placard on the floor for him.
Wow.
He had reserved seating that night.
Wow, that's great.
But the awards banquet, as usual, it gets long, but it really is an, another, uh, program like the National Honor Society that recognizes the efforts that these students have put in here at the school over the years and it was tremendous night again. Fortunate to have the Swickle Meats back here. They were a little bit cold, but they were well-attended. I attended both the men's, or the, I guess you call them men's and women's or girls and boys, however you want to say it, out here, but, uh, uh, again, our track teams represented us well and the boys are really on their way to doing some phenomenal things with a couple individual girls. The girls' team finished well, but not as high toward the states as the boys, but it was great to have it here and even our booster club and the activity and everything else that was going on out here for two solid nights was great. Um, also, I'd like to thank Mr. Wells and the, uh, the clergy of Oxford. We, uh, I don't want to say reconvene because it probably is noon because I'm probably the only one that even remembers a baccalaureate service. There haven't been any for 35 years in this area, probably. I think the last one in Oxford was, uh, 69 before they moved to this high school over here. But, uh, Mr. Wells and the clergy had a fine service, ecumenical and nothing pressured or shoved down anyone's throat. Uh, it was well-attended by all the clergy of the town, the senior class and everyone else. So, um, send, and, and they are sending our students off with prayer and thought and I thought it was a very extremely nice service and hope that they can continue the tradition, all right? Can, uh, you, you briefly touched Niask and there's been some rumors out there and I know they're not true and I'm not even gonna go into what they are, but have we had any preliminary report or has Mr. Wells on Niask yet?
Through the chair, uh, Mr. Peterson? No, the preliminary report will come in over the, uh, early part of the summer and then the final will come in after Mr. Wells approves the, the factual content of the preliminary and then we will receive the final report, uh, early fall.
I, I, and I understood that, but I just wanted to, uh, have that reiterated and for the public to understand that because, um, when we know, when we know, they'll be the first to be told what is happening, so the rumors and things can, can stop for time being, please.
Okay, great. You all set?
That's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Ennis?
Okay, let's see. Uh, I'm gonna go on, uh, piggyback on something that the, well, first, I want to congratulate, um, Selectman La Mountain and Casey on their reelection uh, last week. And I'm, I'm just going to comment on something our superintendent had said. I was receiving some phone calls and a couple of emails in regard to activities going on with the sports program here at the high school and I had a very good, um, communication with the president, Bob Pushes, and, and I guess somebody had started saying that the school committee voted out sports. Said it never happened, it never was even discussed, there was no, no talk of it. So, for the record and if anybody reads our meeting minutes, I think it just needs to be reiterated that we didn't have this discussion, uh, that the booster club still does a great job as they have for years and, and they will continue to do so. So, if, if anybody wants to start any more rumors, I guess, you know, you're gonna have to find something else to pick on. Um, I'm concerned about the mold in the administration building. Uh, I think we were told there was no problem, now there is a significant problem, it sounds like. So, in saying that, what is the timeline for your moving into the community center? And once we do move into the community center, will we be paying any kind of a fee for rental or is it, is it something that the town is, you know, kind of giving us a nice location? Um, and also, if you have made any contact with BayPath about any of the upcoming work, to defer some of the costs?
I, I think I got them all. Um, in terms of the mold issue, uh, we did a, we did a study of our air quality there back in 2008 and this most current report basically mirrors, um, what was in the initial report. I think it's subject to interpretation. The remediation has begun, the short-term fix has been put in place and, um, the, the quality of the building is far better now than it was, uh, prior to that action. Uh, I believe that the town understood the situation by their approval, uh, at town meeting to go ahead and, um, and vote the money, uh, to improve the community center and certainly, while I think it is still to be negotiated, it would be expected that we would put some money into, in, in the form of, of rent into that, um, into that account, uh, just as we pay, uh, to maintain the, the building now out of our budget. Um, and that...
Can I cut this for a second, please?
Um, go right ahead.
Before you go any further, Mr. Himmelberger, I believe some of those comments should be reserved and maybe for executive session because, um, those are legal and monetary responsibilities of ours that, uh, should be discussed at, in another forum than right now. We're not ready to do anything and I don't believe we voted to, uh, other, our only vote was to let them seek out or look for alternative places. So, I think some of this is premature that's being rumored around town also, but as far as making any comments as far as economics or anything are concerned, I believe that, uh, is still up for negotiation, should be reserved for different...
All right, Mr. Himmelberger, if you could just leave out any...
And I, I certainly respect that, Mr. Peterson. I wasn't intending to, um, to, to give my opinion on anything. I was certainly just trying to answer Mrs. Ennis's question, but I understand.
I understand, but...
Yep. Um, and so, and the one last piece of your question, Mrs. Ennis, was...
For any of the work that's gonna be necessary for the school?
On BayPath, yes. I have not had a chance to speak to, um, Superintendent Papagiani, um, but I will be seeing him next week and I will, um, reserve some time so that we can ask about that.
Okay.
It's on my list.
Mr. Peterson?
Uh, I'll add to Mrs. Ennis and Mr. Himmelberger. Uh, it is a town building and I have no problem with trying to help or help Bay, or get BayPath or something down here, but I believe that maybe Mr. Himmelberger should talk to Mr. Zaneski and it should come directly from the town request because that is their building and not under our, uh...
I'm sure you can work that out with Mr. Zaneski, right?
I think it should be a joint effort there than us just going looking for BayPath because they set their schedule up and they have things already on, on script, the schedule.
Great point.
And if they can work something out with us through the town and the school. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Ennis, continue, please.
The only thing that I just wanted also add, um, is I won't be able to make all the events. I'll be able to make graduation, but for personal things that have come up with my mom and stuff, I won't be able to make all the events, but, um, I'm there in spirit and I wish all of the seniors all the best. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Mrs. Conan?
Just a couple of quick things. Um, were we able to put together a list of retirees as the school year is?
Yes. And, um, if, if it's the will of the committee, we do have, uh, three retiring and, uh, if you would like, I can certainly ask if they can come in on the June 7th meeting.
That'd be great, if you could, I think.
Yeah, we just have three. We just have three this year. We had a large amount the last couple of years, but there are three, uh, who have, um, decided to retire.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Peterson? Do you...
I was gonna wait till you was done.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
I firmly believe in having them come in, but in the past, we have, uh, drafted a letter, uh, for them for their personal files, even though I understand they're retiring, they're probably not looking for another job when they leave here, but I think a letter of thanks from us should be extended to them as well as having them come in here, please.
Could we have those ready for that meeting as well, Mr. Himmelberger?
Certainly. What I'll do is I'll have the, um, the letters in the packet for that.
Great, thank you so much.
For that June 7th.
Excellent, thank you.
If I could just add with those letters that please make sure we all have opportunity to sign them, I think is very important, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Conan?
Thank you. And just one last piece, we had an issue with some food service owing of, of money last year, are we in a better spot this year? Have we seen the same thing happening as we get closer to the end of the school year, or are we better?
No, I, I don't think there are any runaway accounts because we've done an excellent job.
Great.
Of saying this is as far as you can go, and that's it, no more, and those policies have been strictly adhered to this year.
That's great.
Fabulous.
You probably saw in the paper, Framingham is, I think, in the hole's $37,000, $36,000 in their food service accounts, a big, big operation, a $2 million operation.
That's just creeping right up behind us.
Wow.
Yeah, I think it's widespread.
I think it's, congratulations to the committee for putting in the policy and for the parents and, and staff to be working to, to understand that, it's important, and it's been really a non-issue so far this year.
Thank you.
Great.
Fabulous, appreciation to all, thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Conan. I really don't have too much tonight, I just want to apologize for not attending a lot of these events that we've been talking about tonight. Again, I'm there in spirit, but I've been with this new job, I've been working a billion hours, so hopefully that'll calm down very soon. I will be attending the last few events that we have, like graduation, as well as the middle school recognition day, I plan to be there as well, senior banquet, I've already told them I can't make. But it's, it's an exciting time, and Mr. Peterson's probably the best at attending all these things, he attends more stuff than anybody, I think, and, and he really does a great job representing the committee, and I thank you for that, Mr. Peterson, because you really do make it pretty much everything. And I did attend the prom, I was the chaperone at the prom, I did make that.
I don't do proms.
You don't do proms, all right?
I'm sorry.
And it was, it was just as Nikki stated, it was beautiful, they had the junior and senior class together, extremely well-behaved. I heard comments from people that worked at the Hogan Center, how much nicer it was than a previous school that had been there, and they, they really enjoyed the kids, and I was just very proud that the kids all behaved themselves so well, and they all looked so beautiful and great, and congratulations on that. There being nothing else for me, I will open up the floor for comment, close the floor. I do see that we do have a request for executive session, I'm not really familiar with what it is, but I am pretty sure it's for negotiations, is that something that we want to postpone, Mr. Peterson, to?
No, I think we.
You want to do it?